Well, I really don't think.
And also remind everyone that the videos live stream and it will be recorded also.
Yeah, that's good.
Before we get started, everybody comfortable? Is it too hot, too cold?
It's good.
It's warm? Mike?
Actually, you should, we need to leave one of the doors open. Yeah. Cause it's a public meeting. Alright. Okay, let me know. And you should let me know when you're ready. We have anyone online today? Do we have anyone remote?
Okay. Okay. Okay, sorry, I'm also.
Red. Mike? Good. Wait till he connects. Mike, let us know when you can hear us. Hey.
Hey, Bill, how you doing? Sorry I'm late.
No, no worries. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
I'm glad you're here. Cause I have something to add to the agenda upfront. Cause our terms expired, so. I know, right? Seems like seems like we just voted on the CIP. Okay, great. So let me just call roll here. We'd started recording, you should.
Yes.
Beauty. Great. So welcome to the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three Munder County Planning Board. And we call roll here in a minute, but I just wanted to remind you, we have three votes today. Uh, one is the December minutes and we've got two amendment votes. And it's being recorded and also streaming. So go down, Bill Santos, I'm here. Vice Chair Mike Whittimer.
Here.
Zoom. Or virtual. Sam Truppani. Andrew Hallister. Orlando Rivera. Warren. Dave Watson. Robert Farley.
Joining the attending guys, so I don't know if they'll be joining us later.
Okay, great. Thanks. Just, just a reminder to sign in if you you're just getting here. Andre Evans.
Here.
George Hebert.
Yep.
Rachel Bernhardt. Jeff McKinnon. Adrian Green. Amy Grower. Laura Smith. Bob Franklin. Josette Manjerry. Are you? Richard Tantalo.
Here.
Christina Doherty. Hi Christina. Mike Garland.
I'm here for him.
And Sean Murphy. Thanks Sean. Great. So in the form. So the first item is our Oh, I'm sorry. Kim, thank you. Go ahead. Thanks for reminding me.
Okay, we have Anna Star, Department H, and then we have Sean, who was filling in for Rochelle. And then myself, Kim. Um, Tom. Tom Price? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right there, right? I'm like looking beyond you. Far as far as that.
No problem.
Um, and a Scott here? Nope, I don't see Scott though. Okay, I wasn't sure if he was gonna be here or not. And that would do it for staff. Did anyone get missed? Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Kim. All right. Now, first thing on the agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion to modify the agenda to elect Chair and Vice Chair. And this is mostly for citizen members to elect Chair and Vice Chair. I need a motion for that. Thanks Orlando. Thank you, Andrew. So under discussion, I'd like to apologize for not getting that in the agenda sooner. So if you'd like to not do that this meeting, we could vote it down and do it the March second meeting just prior to the CIP introduction. But it's, I'll, I'll leave it up to you. So. So hearing no other discussion, all in favor of modifying the agenda to elect Chair and Vice Chair today, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any abstentions? Great, thank you. So I would like to open up nominations for Chair. Uh, if there's someone interested in being Chair, please nominate them. If someone's interested in nominating someone who's Chair now, that's, I'll take that too. Just to keep things rolling. Citizen, uh, sorry, citizen members, gotta be citizen board members. So Sam, Andrew, Orlando, Dave, Robert, Andre, and Mike of that group. Go ahead, Dave.
I would like to move to nominee Bill Williams.
If I'll accept the nomination, is there a second?
I'll second that.
That's great. Okay, thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. So that was Dave. And Andre. Or Bill. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations in a motion to nominate Bill Santos as Chair for twenty twenty-three.
So.
So a second.
Great, thank you. Same to all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Reopposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Thank you. I need a motion now to, or sorry, I need to open up nominations for Vice Chair. And I'd like to nominate Mike Whittimer. Is there a second for that? Thanks. Thank you, Andrew. Uh, Mike. Andrew. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Anyone else interested? Don't be shy. Everyone's taking two steps back. Well, I close nominations, hearing none, and I need a motion to have Mike Whittimer be Vice Chair for the year twenty twenty-three. So Andre, is there a second? Thank you, David. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ready opposed? Any abstentions? Great, thank you.
Yeah, Andre and David motions.
Yeah, so it was Bill and Andrew nominated, and then Andrew and Dave motioned in second. Yeah. Fast, great. Next item on the agenda, thank you for everyone's patience there, is approval of the December fifteenth meeting minutes. Uh, they were included in your packet. Um, I need a motion for those, please. Thank you, George. That was Robert, George and Robert. Is there any discussion with those or any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Great, minutes are approved. Okay. And we're good. So are there any announcements or communications?
Well, they are in your meeting package, you should receive the twenty twenty-three meeting schedule, and there's some three small minor corrections from the ones sent out in December. Um, and those are small corrections.
That's, um, they were just, two of the corrections were for the year, I believe, one that was today's meeting said twenty twenty-two. And I believe March, the first March one said twenty twenty-two. But then also it said that we would be meeting here virtually when it should be here in person. So that was all that needed to be crafted.
Good.
And so the update information have been posted online, and we also add in our plan for meeting schedule in the county event page.
Oh, nice.
Information.
Have a question on that. Is there, when we send out, um, I know we have it on the invite, uh, this, this Zoom Munder County Zoom, is there a, do we publish the public invitation somewhere? Like if someone from the public want to view the meeting, do we put that up front or we, we publish it like legal time ahead of?
Yes, we posted on our meeting agenda has the
Okay.
As the public will be able to clear the thing, they need to register.
I got you.
And then the registration will, you know.
Yeah, just say register and part of the, part of the link. Okay, understood. Great. Thank you.
Also, communications has a published a connect with, I'm not sure if it's the daily, what would it be on it that they might daily register?
Okay.
Yeah, because we do send a copy, we include Megan over at Communications in our invite, so she has the information.
Right. Nice. Thank you for all that. Alright, action items. So first action item is to amend the twenty twenty-three capital budget to provide an increase in funding in the amount of four hundred dollars from three point five eight million dollars to four point zero one million dollars for the Middle Road project in the town of Henrietta. Let me make sure I've got that. And the specific action requested of Planning Board is to recommend an amendment to the twenty twenty-three capital budget to increase project authorization of four hundred and three thousand dollars for the Middle Road project from three million, five hundred and eighty thousand to four million, ten thousand, making the total project authorization of four million, ten thousand, and I need a motion for that, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hebert. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Is there any discussion on that? Is there a presentation?
I'm available to talk about this.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you for having me. Also, yeah, so basically it's a middle road project in the town Henrietta, it goes from Erie Station Road to Lehigh Station Road. And the reason for the cost increases are two separate things. One, costs have gone up. Well, the standard materials, everything's gone up. So what we typically base our engineering estimate on are past bid prices, the New York State weighted average bid prices, as well as engineering judgment. So we do the best we can to come up with, with an estimate. Um, so those prices went up. The other reason is the fact that we're originally going to just construct six foot wide shoulders out there. So putting eleven foot lanes, six foot wide shoulders, six foot wide shoulders will be new. And what we did is we took pavement cores of the roadway and determined that from the travel way edge, the right, basically tire, tire line, uh, that portion of the asphalt was not, not very good condition. So we decided to increase our reconstruction limits to include more of the trap to the shoulder, and obviously that will increase costs as well. Um, so we're asking for additional money to cover that. Uh, we did have some other projects that did come in under, so I can make up for, for the money that way, and I didn't share that with Bob's. So here's where we're at.
And these are bid prices?
The
These, these are actual bids that came in, sorry.
Yes, you will, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any ability to break down how much of its inflation slash cost increases versus increased scope due to poor shoulder condition?
Um, I don't, right now that I can provide that information.
To, just to follow up to George's question, is it, do you know or have a feel for what the inflation numbers, that's where you're going, right? So do you have an idea of what you've been running into on other projects for fifteen, twenty percent, or is it?
Um, oh, right there, inflation probably twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
Yeah. Yeah, that's
Well, yeah, it leads me back to my question of
Right.
How real is our CIP if everything is off price by twenty-five, forty percent, which is what we're seeing for everything that comes up?
Yeah. So fortunately, Mr. Chairman, Tom and I did have a conversation about this, because when we do have significant increases on a project, like go back to that department and discuss opportunities to rein in some other costs, and Tom's reviewed, uh, four of his other capital projects. Two, I believe, were completed or near completion, which were coming in under budget, and you think two other projects can come in work to be done that could come in. So there are two referrals that the legislature has seen or will be seeing. There were significant increases, I want to say seven, eight hundred thousand dollars combined, and we have about that equivalent dollar amount in savings on four other capital projects.
Right. Okay. They're trying to make it work. Good. Andrew?
So kind of a follow-up question to that, this, can that might be used regardless if we approve this, or it has to be approved here before they can use it?
No, every, every capital project is very specific in the dollars, they're not fungible, so I can't take things that one project can move. We have our own ways in finance of segregating those savings to make sure that they can be spent.
We seem to spend them though.
Also, Andrew?
Yeah, yeah, good, thank you.
Yeah, I, I did bring up, I don't remember, a couple of months ago whether or not the whole CIP for twenty twenty-four, twenty, whatever it is, nine, um, needs to be looked at, and I don't remember what the answer was to that. Maybe we'll find out March second. I would like that work to be done beforehand, so when we get March second incorporates it.
Right.
Well, I think as we do prepare the CIP, we try to accommodate a space of kind escalation for projects that are going to be out, like saying twenty-nine, thirty. But we've seen of late that the escalation has been going on, it's atypical, it's not a three to four percent. There've been other issues that are happening there.
Yeah.
So we don't want to overinflate a project by putting a twenty-five percent contingency, and then find out we're really only at about two or three percent.
And to be honest with you, when I went through the last five CIPs, just you know, some project that hasn't hit yet, um, maybe four years ago, the number seems to stay the same year to year to year. And if it's two or three percent, you can kind of live with that and expect it, but right now we're seeing a lot more than that, because who knows better than?
Yeah, is that because when you, when we place the number in the CIP, I'm sorry, this is probably getting further into CIP discussion, but let's say a project A, and you know you're gonna do it in twenty thirty, and you're placing, you have a construct today's construction cost on there, and now then you put an inflation factor on there for twenty thirty, is that how you program these project costs?
Yeah, so there's actually two components. First of all, when you develop the cost for a project that's all thirty years, you're actually using a conceptual, and it, this will actually be some discussion we're gonna have here in a few minutes.
Yeah.
But it's a conceptual cost, and then if you develop the project further and get a better handle on cost, they, they could go up or down clearly, but then, so you put escalation on what you know is conceptual. And again, if that's ten
Yep.
You know, five years out or something, you only account for that at a couple percent.
Yeah. But you're figuring, that's what you're figuring, you are figuring for, if it's a twenty thirty project, you're kind of trying to guess what thirty prices.
Some escalation up to that point, right, based on a conceptual design.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, we use like a standard escalation fee per year times that many years.
Right. Yep. That is standard practice, so, okay.
That depends on industry, so you're seeing a lot of changes in oil. I mean, oil's a big thing, right? Drywall, as we talked about securities, talked here in a few minutes, we're seeing significant increases in security costs.
Yep.
delays and all that.
Sure. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is approved. Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Yeah, nice job. Next item on the agenda is to recommend amendment to the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight capital improvement program in the twenty twenty-three capital budget to increase the funding for the specialized security detention facility project in the amount of twenty-five million dollars from zero to twenty-five million for a total project authorization of sixty-one million, six hundred thousand dollars. Any in a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second issue.
And Mike. Stack it in, thank you, Mike. And here, Sean, you're presenting.
I've got a presentation.
Great.
So she's queuing it up, so the big discussion here is gonna be the substantial change in the scope of the project, more than it is escalation of materials. Clearly, those escalation costs are there, but the bigger focus here is that there's been a significant change in the project as we've been moving forward. So first couple slides you can go through, that's just a cover, and I always put this in just to marginalize where we're at, since this is in the record. The next one, please. So again, for anybody that remembers the CDC, there are really two things going on out there. One is for fifteen and younger youth that are juvenile offenders or juvenile delinquents. Those facilities need to be built to a, a secure detention criteria. The Raise the Age that came about in, uh, two thousand and eighteen, took sixteen to seventeen year olds out there, and they're called adolescent offenders. And the big issue here is that OCF kids, SCLC manages the older kids, and as we've been going through this discussion, they have some kinds, uh, different philosophies on how things are supposed to be done. But the underlying factor here is that the entire facility essentially needs to be built to the SSD, the more secured detention capability, so that we can move student or, well, youth around the facility. So that's just some acronyms there, so you can remember that as we're moving forward. The next slide just reminds everybody that the facility used to be out by Iowa in Brighton, got moved out in two thousand and fourteen, the rush, bought some property from the state. And again, when it was moved out, it was a secured detention facility for juveniles. The Raise the Age, next slide, please. Raise the Age came about in two thousand and eighteen, and there was a plan to expand the facility by going with, again, what was a conceptual design at that point. Unfortunately, it was a linear design, which proved to be not very functional, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in the future here. But the regulations were moving, uh, pretty quickly, and the timeframe was coming very quickly, so we renovated a portion of building sixty-seven in the lower right-hand corner, you can see that little square area, we added ten new SSD, so that's secure, specialized secure detention beds for the adolescent offenders to meet the first deadline of two thousand and eighteen. Unfortunately, two thousand and nineteen was looming pretty quickly, we weren't able to get any other facility built because of a number of reasons. So we had to spend a, a good chunk of money to harden building sixty-eight in the upper left-hand corner, so those same SSD requirements, so that we could house, uh, I say we, DHS could house adolescent offenders in that facility. So at that point, based on those uh, small renovation and the hardening, uh, there were thirty-one SSD beds that were at the, that particular point. So based on that schematic design, we had a, an estimate at that point of twenty-one point seven million dollars. Went to, came to the board, the board made the recommendation, went to the ledge, got the twenty-one seven, twenty-one point seven million dollars, uh, put together is Resolution one eighty-nine of two thousand and eighteen, and created a capital fund. So if you go to the next slide, you can see
Can I stop for just a quick second?
Sure.
I don't know what linear design means, can you just?
I'll explain it on the next slide.
Okay, second question is it sounded from what you said like we didn't execute the plan that was originally expected as far as building sixty-eight goes? Is that the way, what I heard you say was that due to problems, you had to do some other things to harden the facility, which made it sound like it wasn't what we proved, at least what we were told we were proving, and I'm not against changes, I'm just trying to understand.
Right, so so in two thousand and eighteen, we went to the ledge with this plan to build this linear facility.
I remember.
Yep, okay.
We did a tour of the facility even as part of this.
Yep. But we had to have things ready by two thousand and nineteen, so there was no way we were gonna have the additional beds built two thousand and nineteen to take the additional youth in there. So with that, we hardened building sixty-eight with the state's assistance to
Make those beds suitable for SSD?
Right, so then the entire facility was SSD. And then this, the linear facility, which I'll explain here in a second, was not built because now that we had a little bit more time, because we had the SSD capability, we went back and revisited what exactly the facility needed to look like and how it was gonna operate. So then on the, on the next, and just to kind of clarify too, right, it's a thirty-seven thousand square foot new building with a seven thousand foot renovation is where we're at to get to that twenty-one point seven million dollars. So now if you go to the next slide, right, in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see what the original concept was, that linear. So basically the bedrooms are in the upper portion, uh, program spaces in the lower portion, but linear means it's just like in order to go from point A to point B, you have to pass everybody that's there, and it's difficult to do because the regulation state, you have to maintain sight and sound separations for the three different populations, right? We have, and it's, and I actually put three plus, because even though there's J O's and J D males, J D, A O, uh, J D females are a population, and A O males are a population, in each of those groups, you have subpopulations, because you have gangs, transgender, a whole bunch of different people that have to be potentially separated even further than just those three main populations. So with that, we developed in schematic design the lower left-hand corner, what's a circular way of doing this. So you see the housing pods are set up in the, uh, north in the upper corner. Dining was gonna be on the left side, administration, which is medical, uh, admissions, uh, visitation, all that on the bottom side, then education and recreation on the other. So if someone's in their the youth are in their housing units, one can move one way, the other can move the other way, and they're not crossing paths with each other as they're doing different activities at the site. So that schematic design was developed, and, uh, we came up with a, a different estimate, bumped the cost up to a little over thirty million dollars at that point. Went back to the ledge and, uh, increased the capital fund three six point six million dollars. But then we had some discussions with the state about where things were at with population and some other increases that had to happen based on operating experience that they were getting at the facility. So with that, uh, we had some other changes that were made in our discussions with the state. If you look on the, the right-hand side, you can see a little bit different configuration in the bedrooms. Uh, well, I guess first, let me step back a little bit. We went from a population or an anticipated population on the first lower left-hand corner of about thirty-four beds. But in discussions with the state, the administration, uh, bumped that up to fifty-eight beds. So this new facility will have fifty-eight SSD beds. The capability of taking that, that number of, uh, youth. So with that, we were gonna have those pods that are in the upper corner there, those are actually six bedpods. There were gonna be twelve bedpods, but going back to this issue with the population, if we had two or three kids in a gang, taking up a whole twelve-bed pod, you basically lose the rest of the capacity in that. So what we did is we modified how the housing pods are, instead of having the four twelve-bed pods, we have two twelve-bed pods and four six-bed pods, which gives the facility quite a bit more uh, flexibility in how they house youth population groups. So there was a, a change in the, uh, size of the facility that happened because of that. The state then came back and, uh, had us made some modifications for security, because again, we're dealing with SCLC who has the SSD issues, we had to add secure vestibules in the facility, in each of those bedpods, that increased the size a little bit. Uh, OCFS then Uh, OCFS then came back and wanted us to add an additional room in each of the housing units. So that the youth could meet with counselors directly on the housing unit instead of going over to a counseling center. And then the day rooms got increased a little bit, so there was a, an increase in the housing. Space from schematic design to the bid design of about fifty percent, so there's, there's an increase right there. Uh, OCFS asked us to increase the size of the infirmary, so we had to add. An additional bed in the infirmary, we added an additional classroom at the request of the Rochester School, City School District to provide a little bit more flexibility there. The classrooms got a little bit larger. The corridor, which was great feedback we got from the school district, the corridors were normally eight to six, eight to ten feet, they wanted that wider, again, going back to the high school. Thing, you know, when kids are in the hall, you want a little bit more space or they're not so confined to what's going on there. Visitation, which is in the lower portion, where you see the driveway coming up to it, got a little bit larger and reconfigured. And, and it's interesting, when I was, we were having discussions with the site, my visitation being out there with the visitor lot. They were pretty insistent that we had to watch out for how we put windows in there, because if somebody pulls up in their red VW bus. Kids inside actually know who owns that bus, and if it's a different gang, that creates a whole different level of, uh, interest, so. Sight and sound separation throughout the whole facility was really key on what we had to do as far as, uh. Designing the facility, food service was increased a little bit, so. Again, overall from schematic design, we increased the size of the facility about thirty percent, so I mentioned fifty percent for housing. Classroom and recreation increased about five percent, administration, which is medical, visitation, security and all that, fifty percent, and dining increased about twenty percent. In addition, then the state S C O C came back with some other items that they wanted us to put in the facility. By code, this is actually three individual buildings, right, because it, that helped us reduce what we had to do from a code perspective. It actually worked out to our advantage when the state came back and said they wanted us to put breaker gates in, so essentially each of the areas, they wanted us to isolate, so. If a youth was in admin and something happened, we have breaker gates that we could isolate that area from the rest of the facility, so that adds cost. I guess, uh, kind of the bottom line, even though we increased the space only about thirty, I'd say only thirty percent. From schematic design to the bid documents, we actually increased the number of doors, for instance, by forty percent, we went from a hundred and forty doors. To two hundred doors, and these aren't fifty-dollar doors, these are like two thousand dollar doors.
Yeah.
So that added some significant costs that went along with it, so, uh. The morphing of the facility from the linear design to the circular design was a significant increase, but then with our discussions with the state. We then added some additional enhancements, both in terms of program attic space, but then also safety features that were built into it. And the state pushed back on us in a couple of situations on materials, for instance. We were going to use, uh, what's called abuse board, it's, uh, detention grade gypsum board with. Mesh behind it, but they actually wanted us to go to some metal material for ceiling, some other things, just to enhance security a little bit, and those were being driven in part by S C O C. So with that, that increased the cost, and you can also see, uh, you can't really see it, but it's on the, on the presentation. So we went from forty-four thousand square feet to about fifty thousand square feet to about forty-four thousand square feet. And that's where we are today in this particular situation.
A, a, a quick question, I.
Sure.
Uh, has the public safety director, uh, analyzed your security plan, I know that it, S C O C and O C S F. Have their regulations, but I found in dealing with those facilities, that it was far short. Of what's needed to actually protect workers, uh, that are, that are there, so public safety director, have you had a chance to? To analyze this facility and come up with a viable plan that protects our workers?
Well, we haven't officially viewed this plan, but we're in constant communication with the CDC and what the regulations are, we have an. Those enhancements and continually support these efforts.
So do we have the extra cameras, and, and I know that there's limit on where the cameras can go. And buttons and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Peter was involved in that conversation, yeah, so there's cameras all over the place, wifi, panic buttons in, uh. Like, I mentioned that extra room that's going to be built in the housing pods, that'll have a, a distress signal in there, so if there's an issue, that can be taken care of. And actually, OCFS and S C O C were really helpful from other facilities they seen about adding features to make sure that everything. Is going out well, and then also, just before you know, uh, before we actually went to S C O C, the sheriff's department actually reviewed this, because they need to certify the facility. Before it can be occupied, so the sheriff was involved, Pete and Perry from D H S were involved in the, in the whole design. Yeah, D E S did not design the sucker in a bubble, it was, we had everybody and their brother involved in the discussions. And that, and that's where we actually got the information about the gang issue, right, being able to see outside. The staff, uh, because of the addition of the. Secure vestibule changed a little bit the configuration, the staff actually said, well, is there a possibility of putting a laundry facility on each of the individual housing pods? For two reasons, one, that they can wash individual uniforms right on the housing pod, rather than taking a whole bunch of laundry down to the central location. Also gives the kids an opportunity to learn some life skills, let them do their own laundry, if that's the case. And there is a lot of vocational stuff built into this too, there's a vocational classroom in addition, just regular classrooms, there's a library. The, uh, dining area I told you was expanded a little bit because there's vocational opportunities and, uh, dining. And culinary, those types of activities, a lot, a lot of interaction with the site, and then also with the security folks, to make sure that we had all those things addressed. So the next slide, just again, since you have the copy, or just list some of the things I just mentioned out as far as what was, uh, requested by both the state and from the facility. So going out to the next slide, uh, so we're coming back to you now with an all-in number, we sent this out to bids. And you can see, really, really impressed by the grouping of the bids. Three bidders were within, you know, a couple percent of each other, forty-six million and change. The low bidder, uh, we did a de-scope with them, and they are confident that they can provide project at the, uh, four million they left on the table. But we took those all-in costs, all the, uh, costs associated with the renovation of sixty-seven, the hardening of sixty-eight. We've got, uh, now bid certainty, we've included, uh, significant condition, well, about twenty percent contingency, even though it's a new facility. Where we normally use about five to ten percent, we bumped it up to about fifteen percent. In part because the low bidder left so much on the table, it's going to be a struggle with him constantly, he's going to be always. Picking us for change orders, and we'll, we've got a C M, experienced C M on our team. That'll manage that and make sure that those are held to a minimum, it's all a chase. And then F F N E, there's some furniture that we provide, that they install, some furniture that they provide under the contract. Uh, again, because of the delays we've talked about, there are temporary program trailers out there. In order to retrofit sixty-seven, the renovation there, we actually took away a day area, so we had to put a temporary trailer out there. For that, and now because we have the additional population, we put out two additional trailers that they're using for classroom space, and those will eventually go away when the construction is complete. And then another important aspect of this is the cost sharing that goes along with it, right, so the SD portion of the project, the state reimburses us forty-nine percent. The SSD portion, they reimburse the county at a hundred percent. So Bob has already had some meetings with D O B about the percentage and how that whole, uh, equation's going to work. And, and that's, uh, that is an ongoing conversation.
But what's the breakdown in cost between SSD and SD? You got, you got a twenty-five million, how much of it is hundred percent state funded, how much of it is?
So, uh, the entire sixty-one million dollar project. Want to say fifteen million is county, does that sound familiar?
Um, I, so, uh, seventeen, because if one include contingency, it's going to be less than seventeen million. But that's including contingency that's all in, but it's. The county's portion, it's about twenty, twenty-four percent of the overall cost. I had the spreadsheet, Bob.
Yeah, is it version twelve or twelve A?
Twelve.
So I have a sixty-one point six million reimbursement shares. Forty-five point three million for New York State, sixteen point three million. Or you know how this, probably don't know how this works, they doesn't write us a check for forty-five million dollars. Um, we. We will bond the entire amount to get this built. And what New York State does, we have to file quarterly cost reports. For the detention center, and then an annual cost report, so New York State, based on the quarter. Cost reports sets a per diem reimbursement rate. And then with the annual cost report, they true up the real expenses and the real reimbursement shares. For the capital project, once they approve, once we complete. And package and submit the capital project for their review and approval. They will look at the costs of that capital project. And then divide that out over twenty years by an estimate of the bed nights provided. And there's a add-on to our daily per diem rate for the capital portion. So as time goes on, they will reimburse us based on. Add-on to our per diem rate each year.
Over that twenty year.
So, that is something we already raised with OCFS, a C O C. In New York State Division of the Budget. Um, the normal process is, these are thirty-year projects, we don't bond for thirty years, we bond for twenty years.
Right.
So we had to package together documentation for like the last five bond issuances to prove we have a twenty-year maturity schedule. So. They accepted that. The proof will be in the pudding when they. Project, right?
Yeah.
I have a quick question, the fifty-eight beds, are we comfortable, I mean, you must be comfortable with that number, but, um. It, it wasn't increased because of raise the age, um. Uh, uh, can you, can you talk a little bit about how you arrived at that number, and if you think that that's adequate?
Yes, our population projections back in the original, and this is discussions with the sheriff, OCFS and S C O C, was that thirty-four beds? The population varies, obviously, as time goes on and activities happen. Uh, but then there was some discussion with the state about being able to provide either regional beds in addition, so. It's accommodation, and that's only if available, so if it turns out there's fifty-eight county youth in there.
Yeah.
The other counties have to find their own facility, but part of the goal here is to act more as a regional and statewide facility.
Makes sense, thank you.
Did, did we agree to that?
Exactly.
Trust upon us? That, I mean, as recently as August twenty-second, I, I, twenty-sixth of last year, I sent a letter to the administration, got a number of responses regarding the. G D C and, um. It, it effectively says, you know. This is from Monroe County, not for other, so, and, and I'm perfectly fine with having others use it, I just, how do we charge for them? Is that something we offered up, or was it something that OCFS or somebody said thou shalt?
You, you will get a hundred percent reimbursement for any out-of-county youth placed at our facility.
Based on?
Based on our state. Reimb, reimbursement rate.
Okay.
Your state will turn around and build the other county for their youth, and then they have to pay the state.
Okay, but again, it is on an as, as available basis, so if it turns out there are all Monroe County youth in there, then space is not available to anybody else. But. If there's space available and you can get another youth, and you get revenue out of that, because you have the staff there already anticipating the youth.
Yeah, fix cost. So, so again, was this the county decided to sell Wayne and Livingston and Ontario and all the others that. They can use our facility, or, I mean, we, are we in the same condition we were a year.
Long recommendation from. OCFS with Monroe County concurrence.
Okay, so we went along with the.
Yes.
Shovel. Okay. When, when did work begin on this phase two project? I mean, when did you guys start realize you needed to have a phase two?
Well, going back to two thousand eighteen, the plan was that linear facility was based on.
That's, that's what I thought you were calling phase one, but when did fade, no?
No, that was the whole thing.
Phase one was really the hardening of building sixty-eight and the.
Renovation.
Ten bed facility up near, you're like sixty-seven.
Right, to get you over the first phase, um, requirements, right?
And unfortunately, I don't know if it's a thing we like to say is really good, but we actually took the first A O and state was in Monroe County. In two thousand eighteen.
What's the timeframe for the project, it looks like it's not done till sometime in twenty twenty-five, but when do we expect to actually put a shovel on the ground? When, i- is there any, like, some facilities will become available sooner than twenty twenty-five, or is it like one ribbon cutting?
Uh, we, we have to do some swing space, so, yeah, notice to proceed, we, we're in the life cycle now, where it was introduced.
I know.
Right, so we expect notice to proceed to be in May, once we get everything through the contracts, six hundred and ten day. Final completion, but we built in about a five hundred and fifty substantial completion, because we have to do some swinging, we got to be able to get. The kids out of sixty-seven as we're finalizing connections for that, and then we'll place them someplace else. So they're, uh, actually probably in, uh, housing units one and two, which are farther to the west. So there is some movement around of, uh, activities, but full occupancy will be in the first quarter of twenty-five.
But, and, and nothing in between, like, uh.
There will really be like the, like the fourth quarter potentially of twenty-four, we'll be able to move the kids out of sixty-seven to the other end, but. And the building essentially have to be just about ready to go, because they're going to be in that facility, right?
And you're, you have the temp facilities that you're putting in them, right?
Right, yeah, the trailers are there, and sixty, again, sixty-eight's fully hardened, so if we had to put all A O's down there, that could happen.
Any other counties that might be using it, aren't making any financial contribution to this, they're just going to be part of the per diem rate.
Right.
Which will allow us to, in theory, if they took up half of, we can cover half of it.
Right, there are no capital contributions.
Thanks, Bob, better way asking the question. Okay.
Just, SD versus SSD is just the age, right, is, uh, fifteen and below versus.
It's the age, but it's also the, the facility, so it, in realm, that door could be an SD door.
Yeah.
But an SSD doors, which you see in the jail, it's a different type of lock, different, yeah, because that's driven by S C O C, who has the full.
And state covers all that.
Right.
Okay.
So that's kind of the interesting part of how this thing works, right, the whole facility is going to be SSD.
Yeah.
They're making the argument, well, part of it's going to be originally from an SD, you being out there, but in theory, even if it was SD, you had to harden it to make it SSD.
Yeah.
Bob and I have had this, those thoughtful discussion, and the state's probably like.
We don't, we don't care.
Right.
Hmm.
It's a matter of interpretation.
Go pound, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Thou shalt.
Well, so, but I think, well. Still worth an effort, I mean, it's worth a try, but.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe you don't want to tick them off and have them just totally clam up, maybe just take what you can get, keep going.
Right, right.
But again, you see the project, it's been going so long, and the facility out there, as we all know, is just. Counterproductive for trying to do anything with the youth, so.
Yeah.
It's important that we get this thing on the street as quickly as possible. And now we have bid certainty, we've got good contractors.
Yeah.
You know, good C M on board, so this thing will move pretty quickly.
Yeah. No material issues, where they have that built in, the chase is.
North prestige issue, they've got, like, say, forty-five days or lasting hours of metals in, get ordering all that long lead time equipment.
There's a lot of equipment that's over a year now, right, still.
And some of the, some of the, uh, detention grade stuff like cameras and some of those other things, we're actually going to buy that, we can start buying now, and then turn it over to the contractor, so we have that. Lead time taken care of in our schedule.
Any requirements to have stuff, uh, items built here? Or not yet?
Here, USA versus. Uh, I actually think all this, the detention grade stuff is all built in the United States. Southern Folgers a big name, they're down in the south, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Probably electronics are still.
I think the only thing that the architect was talking about, there are, is some furniture that's not detention grade, but it's more, uh, mental health grade. It has a different feel to it, which I think is made over in Sweden or something like that, but otherwise, most of the other materials are built in the United States.
Any other questions, George?
Well, the other one I have is. Has thought gone into this plan? I mean, I think, I believe what we're seeing at a state level at least is juvenile crime rates are going up pretty dramatically. If fifty-eight is a fifty-nine bed.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight turns out to be the wrong number, and we eat seventy-five, are we talking about massive changes, or is there kind of like? Little plan in there to add two or three more housing in someplace or whatever?
Yeah, we can, so in the six-bed pods, they're actually situated, so you can extend the foundation out, make those into twelve-bed pods. So it catches extra beds, but unfortunately, it goes back to the philosophy, if you have a, right?
Yeah.
Got two gang members that don't get along with anybody else, two use twelve.
Right.
Yep.
And it's, you know, it's interesting, it's kind of sad as an engineer, right, building stuff and then having to go out there and learn these lessons that. There's gang things going on, little kids, I've been through that facility several times, and just the, the look on the kid's face of. Wanting attention and wanting something, so I. You're seeing things going on, little kids, I've been through that facility several times and just the look on the kid's face of wanting attention and wanting something, so I. Honestly feel good that what we're building here, I think it's gonna be a conducive atmosphere, at least make the kids feel a little bit better, whether it helps. Keep off the street in the future, that's up to D H S to figure out, but we're, we're building a facility, at least giving the opportunity to to get to that point.
One time I was there, there were some kids that didn't look like they were not only not happy to be there, but they were ready to take your head off.
Oh, they're big kids.
Yeah.
Is you wanna make one question, juvenile crime rate is actually down fifty percent overall, so this actually gives us the opportunity to. Outsource to other counties uh for uh facility, or county slightly up, but overall juvenile crime rates are down. Arrest rates are down fifty percent, just want to make that. That's, 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 that's um that's state and international.
So that'll help us out, possibly recoup additional funds.
So I I had one question, what, you know, obviously the increase is substantial. Um how much of that is specifically state mandated versus, you know, just. Is all that state manned mandated? Because it's just such a, well.
So, I guess technically the whole facility is state mandated, but I talked about those couple of things, we were gonna use abuse board, they wanted to go with metal. We did do an estimate and we came up with about half a million dollars of increased costs that they they added based on what we would have used versus what they would have used. But again, the other part is the S S D, you have to use a certain type of door, certain type of lock, certain type of equipment, so. There's, there's a baseline that's just driven by the regulations.
So because we have the smaller facility, the state says we have to build a bigger one, eh like, I'm, I'm trying to understand. How, how it got so big and how the state came in and told us what we need.
You mean from schematic design?
It ju- yeah, just the overall, because if, so if I understand, we renovated seven thousand square feet, but now we're adding on thirty-seven thousand square feet. And that's the state came in and said, you need thirty-seven thousand more square feet.
Also, it's based, based on racey age, so you're taking two, two additional years of kids, then you figure out what the population is based on crime rates and historical data. That's where we came up with the thirty-four beds initially, and then talking about what would potentially happen in the rest of the region or the state, that's where we got the fifty-eight beds. But then all those beds have to be S S D beds, because you can't just put juveniles in one spot, and then if you have no juveniles, but everyone's an A O, you can't use those beds. So that's why everything is built out to the higher standard.
There's only five facilities in New York State, that's why the state really pushed to increase the bed capacity to our full design of fifty-eight. Rather than the original.
Five in the upstate counties, Bob, or five including New York City?
Um, I think it's five including New York City, is that right, Josette? It's, it's us, Erie County, Anadaga, Albany and Westchester.
Right, yeah, and we've taken kids from Westchester, I say. They, they've sent some kids up, they had a fire or something and they had to do some renovations and no space, so they brought the kids up here for a few weeks for that.
You frequently find that there is not a bed in the state of New York.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah.
I, I do have one other question, it's not related this specifically, but. Are we gonna need to grow staff, or what about additional expenses beyond the facility expenses?
I still have to step up for fifty-eight beds, there's, there's actual state regulations around owning detention workers per. In the facility.
And that's an operating.
That's why the six-bed pods, it's uh one staff for six youth, that's how the ratio was developed that way. And we did look at, like, again, even the twelve-bed pod, was there a capability of making it so it was kind of like two six beds?
Right.
But not really, because bathrooms and everything else and access, it just didn't work out, so that's why we split them into the smaller. So again, with fifty-eight beds, whether it's the four-twelves or the other ones, you still have the same number of staff, but a lot more flexibility.
Yes, they, as a system, I don't remember the acronym, I know it's J D A S, I don't know what that stands for, we have to enter daily census. Of our population and the state will um use that census and. Use that to calculate the ratio of. J D, this is A O youth um and base their reimbursement on that.
Well, and they reimburse for staff as well?
They do, that's, that's all, the cost of the staff, the cost of the program services. Um all factor into our cost report, and then how, how many, how many beds are filled each on a daily basis?
Actually, okay, yeah, that's how your daily figure is coming, yeah. You do operating and capital and.
And then based on who was a um adolescent offender versus J D or J O, that's how they calculate. Do we get the full reimbursement for that day, or do we get the forty-nine percent?
And who, and they're all, are they, sure? They're, they're all like, sure. Oh, it's a separate, separate department, right?
Okay, from human services, so they're all under there.
Huge, okay, that's why I said the H S, that's, okay. What about the, what does this do to our um? You know, that nice, I always ask this question in the beginning of the C I P presentation, three of your debt, um. Your debt bar chart there.
Yep, so this adds, uh, I mean, sixty-one million dollars is a lot of money, right? So this, this, it does add to our debt service, again, we bond over twenty years, um so. So what I, what I'll say about that table towards the front of the booklet.
Yeah.
Um, this is the wrong way to phrase it, but I haven't figured out a better way, I'll call that worst case scenario.
Yeah.
So right now, the debt service is creeping up and it's, you know, managing that on a budgetary perspective. Um, Josette and I and Joe Tadio also in, is our debt coordinator, we, we, we work. The capital projects, we work, when it comes time to borrowing, maturity schedules within the legal confines we have. Um. And, you know, we, we just work to manage that. That maturity schedule to minimize the year-to-year impact on our budget.
Right.
And we have, you know, we have strategies that we use to um. Cash fund capital projects uh that have already been authorized for bonding. Um.
Have there been any projects that will have to be moved, because, you know, you want to keep that, the debt service numbers kind of flat? And that bar chart there and.
I.
Or is, or are we gonna see a slice, yeah?
Um. We are actively discussing earlier today.
Okay.
Um projects that we should at least think about.
Think about moving out, okay.
Um, and we need a final decision quick, because I know Rochelle is anxious to publish a book.
Sure.
Give to you.
Right, right.
By March first.
Yep.
So it may very well be.
Yeah, okay. Okay. George, anything else, Orlando? Okay, Mike, how are you? Mike, wait, am there any questions on your side?
Nope, none for me.
Laura, you all set? Richard, you all set? Mike, are you all set with, I know you're just jumping in, sorry.
Yeah, sorry I'm so late, folks, but uh, uh no, I, I'm all set unless there's any questions for me.
Yeah. Rachel?
I'm, I'm fine, thank you.
Yeah, Josette. Andrew, you all set?
You were correct, there was a small, there's a surge in crime in New York State from juvenile justice, because overall the trend. Is down actually by fifty percent, so both was.
Mostly down recently, but uh.
Right, maybe search.
Okay. All right, do, do we know what's behind that, the reduction?
What I read in the last, it is mainly murder. Increase in.
Okay.
And uh shootings, murder.
And do we know what's caused, what's caused or helped contribute to the decreases?
I have, I have my, my, have my.
But we're, we're keeping our eye on that, I hope.
Scientifically.
Okay.
Uh from COVID.
Yeah.
To um tech economics to historical.
Yeah.
So three things.
There have been some changes since twenty nineteen, huh, so David, are you uh?
Good.
Um. All right, Sean. Appreciate it, um so um. We did have a motion in a second already, if there's no other discussion, uh all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Andrew is opposed. Any abstentions? Thank you, okay, motion is approved. Thank you for coming in, Sean, taking this job. Well informed, um any other business? Our next scheduled meeting is March second at uh half hour earlier, it is three P M. Uh due to the introduction of the C I P, the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine C I P.
Any chance that's gonna be delayed?
Uh I hope not, because we're kind of, we're supposed to do it today, so.
Oh, you like historically?
Yeah, so um, I don't know, is there any chance for, that's gonna be delayed or?
Protection to C I P?
Yeah, no, right, yeah, okay, awesome. I have a motion for German. And short Robert and. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.